Kind of run down.
There's a lot. There's a lot of yours, um, committed.
Because.
Lots on the.
And, uh, and actually they've done that because that was from here, so it's, you know, that was done for.
We're probably about to.
So they're applying. We went through everything and then we said.
Well, this one else would pass. Something that.
They did their best.
I was talking to somebody and my phone should shut off. Could I use your phone to call and tell?
Yeah, and, you know, we don't have a very long, we don't have a.
How do you live in the mountains or?
Good.
We're trying to. There's no deal, no one is wearing the tie, you know?
Hello? Hello? Hello?
I'm sorry?
You love it?
Yes. Oh, really? Okay.
Oh, come with me, I'll tell you the answer.
That's right.
Okay. And she, she got invited to Christmas time by one of my high school friends to go play in an ensemble. She did it, she took her food. She didn't forget.
Good evening, uh, March sixth, two thousand nineteen, Public Meeting of the Northham Planning Commission. I call the, uh, meetings order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Flugner? Mr. Hollis?
Here.
Mr. Sarah?
President.
Mr. Delfosse? Christopher McLeister?
Here.
Uh, since Chairman Danny Flugner cannot attend this meeting tonight, um, so as me as the Vice Chairman, I will temporarily chair the meeting. Uh, we need a motion, right?
No.
Do not. Okay. Good, maybe you don't want me. Do I need to amend the agenda? Do we have?
There, uh, Mr. Chairman, there was a, uh, matter that the administration wanted to ask. Is it related to the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council? This is the residential portion of that, but, uh, as you know, the Planning Commission hasn't appointed that body and that, uh, term is expiring along with the other terms. So City Council has to recommend two members to nominate to the administration, so it's on two, the Planning Commission puts on one. Currently, you're representing Mr. Flugner, but we will need to renew him for another term. So if that's the tradition's preference or someone else, that's fine. But if you could, uh, make that recommendation, uh, tonight, then you can get him to the meeting next week for that personally.
So this is the Community Reinvestment Housing Council?
The Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council, the CRA Housing Council.
Okay. And do they serve for a one-year period?
It's a three-year term.
Three-year.
Presently, they meet once a year because the city does not have an active CRA program, so it's just, uh, reviewing, uh, the two existing CRAs to make sure that they're, uh, living up to the agreement that, uh, they pledged to.
And did Mr. Flugner indicate that he would be willing to serve again?
I have not spoken to Mr. Flugner about this.
So is there someone on the Planning Commission like to serve on this?
Next meeting is March fourteenth at six P M. Do we nominate Mr. Flugner in his absence?
May. Okay, I'll make a motion, nominate Danny Flugner to serve on this, since he has done a great job in the past with this group. Is there a second? Okay, that does not pass, so we will have to bring this up as a next.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, first order of business tonight is a submitted to the Planning Commission meeting minutes of February sixth, two thousand nineteen.
I move that we approve that submitted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, the next order of business is a public meeting to review the PC eight eleven dash eighteen F P final plat of Sanctuary Number Four. Is there anyone here representing, uh, I believe it's McKinley Havelgrove? Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Rich Costin, twelve oh one South Main Street, North Canton, four four seven two zero.
Thank you.
We, yeah, we were, uh, just seeking to have, uh, approved final approval for, uh, Sanctuary Phase Four. It is twenty-one lots. Uh, it is sticking strictly with, uh, the preliminary plan that was approved. And this is just the next phase of those, of the project. I was here once before and I know there's issues and we want to make sure that everything's right, so that's what we're back here for. And I'm here to answer any questions, but again, we're just sticking with what the preliminary plan was. If you don't want to deviate, we're in Phase Four.
Do we have questions from the Planning Commission?
I have no at this time.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this project? Uh, please approach the, uh, line and say your name and address, please.
Chukals one, three oh seven thirty Street Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I really haven't polished up on this. As I recall, we were discussing previously some kind of egress, egress from the west. I hope I jog somebody's memory up here. Uh, I don't have the specifics, so I'm just gonna throw it out there to you.
That was Phase Five.
That was Phase Five, okay.
And this is Phase Four.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Miriam Bach, B A U G H N A, three twenty eleven. Is there going to be a Phase Five?
Well, this time we're only looking at Phase Four. Uh, I think, uh, the last meeting there was in the meeting ministers discussion over Phase Five, but.
It's four, what's on the original plan, plan that also includes the lots that might become Phase Five?
Uh, I'm not sure I can, I, I missed that meeting, so I'm not sure I can answer this.
Yes, this, this was originally considered at the December fifth meeting. The parcels that are in Phase Five are completely different than the parcels in Phase Four. So, um, these were two separate agenda items from the December fifth meeting.
So from the original plan, Phase Four has been split?
Yes, that's, this is as submitted on December fifth, so those were split. Phase Five was tabled, as I recall.
So there's still an empty part that's yet to be decided?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? What would the, uh, Planning Commission like to do here?
I move that we approve that submitted, see?
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, the last, uh, item we have is we're seeking public input to expand mixed-use overlay of a parcel zone light industrial located at Howard Street and Whitwer between Park Street and Dass Street. And I'm going to turn this over to Pat and he'll explain.
Yes, and, uh, thank you for, uh, your diligence, uh, tonight for me. This is a, a, a matter that was brought to the attention of the the City Council and the Mayor. Uh, it was a particular, special situation that was discovered, uh, with approximately thirteen homes or buildings, uh, uh, over on Howard and Whitwer Street. So I don't know how in the past we got to where we are and that has been researched for a while and we really can't say how it got to be where it's at. The word is, is that thirteen of these properties do not have the mixed-use overlay X in the, in their, uh, in their zoning. And I don't know if that was intentionally not done. Was it accidentally left off? Uh, we have noted in previous instances that there have been some inaccuracies uh, in the map over the years that we're trying to clean up. Perhaps this is that. I've talked with some individuals that, uh, with, with knowledge of the, of the Hoover Company and some believe that these homes were Hoover homes back a long time ago. And that that's, you know, kind of how it came forward associated with that district because it's residential right next to the industrial. And then eventually perhaps, uh, Hoover disposed of those properties and people bought them and whatever, but for some reason, you know, we've included them in the light industrial zoning. Now, those individuals that live there, there's a situation where one is, you know, at that point when they want to move on to a different place and they want to sell that property. And, you know, it was being used as a residence and was hoping to sell it that way, but as I understand how it works with the legal code then, because of the way it's zoned, uh, th- th- this would not be a permitted use there. And as a result, it's affecting their ability to do something. So I don't have all the answers, uh, to it. I have an idea. It's up to the Planning Commission to figure out what you want to do. I'm not here tonight seeking, uh, whether you wish to do something tonight or whether you want to take this up at your April meeting or especially however you want to play that out. But we do have a, a, a property owner there that is actively trying to sell and, you know, comes straight in. It's probably a really good time to have this on the market. Some of the, uh, properties of the thirteen, I believe one is a commercial use, one's a duplex, like at the restaurant, single family. Like I was able to look at it with Rob, if you and I went over, some, I went over with the city official, I'm not sure who it was, and went inventory in all these places. They're all very good, uh, upkeep, lovely, take that kind of thing, look nice. So one of the solutions, uh, could be that, that if they're re-characterized, re-zoned as what they're currently being used as. Currently, this is my home, I live here, uh, and that someday I want to sell, and I could be able to sell it that way. You know, perhaps when this was done years ago or decades ago, I'm not quite sure when, they were thinking that, well, perhaps this is industrial land, the city doesn't have a lot of industrial land, they wanted to keep industrial land. In the fifteen, twenty years, however long it's been or more, since then, there is never been any application for the industrial land. The, uh, facility across the street is, um, you know, bifurcating on, on what they, what they need there. But if the day should come that current occupants or future occupants would need industrial land, they could certainly go through the regular process of buying up the properties around them where they wanted this to be. And, you know, making an offer that people just can't refuse, buy the property petition to Planning Commission to rezone them for industrial use. So for whenever that may occur, if ever, it doesn't seem to me to be fair to the people who are there, that they would have to endure a hardship for something that may never even happen and hasn't happened in however many decades have passed that this has occurred. So that was trying to give you some of the backdrop and I, I'm sorry that we're not able to put our, uh, uh, a finger on, you know, exactly when this happened and whatnot, but it, it dates back, you know, earlier than the, you know, any of the occupants that are here. You know, every department here has done a, a pretty earnest search of trying to figure it out and we've come to the conclusion that, you know, we could spend, you know, a, a very long time researching it and still not being able to give you the answer. And in the meantime, uh, some of the folks are seeking relief. So that's how it got to your agenda. Uh, the City Council, you know, if you're looking to the Planning Commission, if you refer it back to them, they will take it up, they will, um, move on this. Uh, it's an interest in really all parties. And there may be, there may be, you know, individuals here with, that are, um, those property owners, not I don't know, who know this as I can.
I'm gonna verify one thing first. Uh, I, I ran a copy and panned that out. And I just wanted to make sure we are looking at this right. So, so the area that I shaded, it appears to have the parking lot that's there today is zoned industrial because it's crosshatched.
Yes.
But then there's a very opposite end of that block, like one lot that is also. So the other thirteen, wherever it may be there is, um, one of our regular show.
Yes, so that's a very good observation here. Your map is correct. I've, I've counted the ones that you have not X off. There are thirteen. The one at the end of Whitwer and Taff is X off, but I don't know if that's an accurate representation of should it have been, should it have been one of the thirteen not X off? It doesn't make sense. When you go there, look at the property, if there's anything different than the property that's Xed or is another resident there?
Some of the difficulty that we have when we were researching some of this is looking at the ordinance. And that's in plural. Uh, when some of these occurred, some of the lots, uh, apparently have merged and the parcel numbers that were utilized in the ordinances have changed. So if you go to the audit or something, you want to pull up that parcel number, you know, it exists. And so we kind of worked our way back and I had provided the CBO, uh, some of the, uh, there's a couple of ordinances that were tied with this and they're left with the, what they call the outlot number and you can make it a little more difficult to find some of these, but, um, what the administrator was, you know, expressing is, you know, what initially started this is a resident wanted to sell their home, leaving it zoned as a residential property and then you can find out that, wow, you're actually living in you're not going to be able to sell it that way. And it, it kind of tipped off that, well, maybe there's some other properties that are in this situation. And so the, the request is to, to give council the authority to look at each one and make that determination of, of whether or not it's appropriate that it's zoned for how it's being used. It's certainly being used as a residential property or sometimes you can look, and unless there's a sign there, you don't know that. You know, all the indicators are this is a residential property and then you see a sign that says it's workshop or shoe shop or, or something along those lines. So the, the, the yeoman's work would be and then building department to ascertain, what does this really mean used as right now? And, and how should it be zoned? And that would be then, uh, a, a further recommendation to planning if it's appropriate and fair to go ahead and zone it in that fashion.
Yes, in the discussion with Waterfront earlier, I think we were also talking that, that it was, you know, if it was residential zoned, it is consistent with what is east of the property. It's not like inserting something that isn't there, that is all residential on the other side of town.
Any questions?
Comments? I mean, I think all the comments from, from Pat and Tim are very reasonable, right? It's just one of those things, right? And you don't want to create any sort of economic hardship on the owner, especially you don't want to impact their, you know, ability to sell the property. You know, I, I wouldn't look for, you know, some reasonable solution. I don't know. And I, the other, the audience isn't having a look at this, but this is just as I was meant, right? That's all it says.
Okay.
There's other, um, parcels in proximity, I know, on the west side of Orchard.
Orchard?
Orchard. Orchard. That appear to be the same zone, right? So, you know, is it appropriate? I don't know what's there, but is it appropriate to include those in this conversation? Is they're all part of that industrial district? The other thing too is, I mean, it would make sense that, you know, if the Hoover District, when, if the Hoover District progresses, that whole area would be acquired by, possibly, right? That makes the most sense, right? Yes, I mean, it's, but, you know, there's got to be a willing seller or employer. So, um, Pat, have we dealt with anything like this in the city before in another area that we can look at as a precedent?
As far as the map being inaccurate?
No, that's not where I was going, so.
Uh, not, not, not to my house.
This is where you have like these little donut holes in, in the middle of, uh,
We actually had some being, uh, kin to this, not, not exactly spot on, you know, but we, we had a situation not long ago where one street is R fifty and in intersection, uh, it's, it's R seven. And you have two parcels that are, that are going to merge that one's R fifty, one's R seven. And, and what's the best thing to do? And perhaps the best thing to do is in the resident's, uh, interest is how would you like it? So you're, you're the owner of both of those, it's split and you, you can't continue when you, when you merge this. So it's really looking at, uh, you know, the fairness for the resident, what's the most beneficial way to utilize the fullest extent of, of your property.
I mean, the sandwich takes time and money and patience, right?
Yes.
And, you know, to do it in parts, doesn't make any sense either. I mean, I don't know if you look at it, you don't want to assemble everything, does it go back to the, the industrial designation?
You're saying we should look at it as a whole?
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Parcels. Yeah. And maybe, maybe there's, uh, once all those, I'm thinking out loud, once all the parcels become owned by one entity that's related to the Hoover District, maybe it makes sense to go, have it go back to industrial?
Correct.
So I believe that. Maybe once.
Correct.
I, I. Or substantially all of them?
Right.
You know, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to create a situation where you hold out because that prevents development. So maybe it's more like, uh, half, half of those units? Well, I become controlled by, uh, an industrial entity or some sort of, you know, related entity to the, the district.
Well, this is a public meeting and the purpose we're having is to bring it out and, and hear from the public.
Sure.
So I think I, you guys might, I think I want to open this up.
Sure.
Okay, so is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Come forward and state your name and address.
We own, uh, three thirty-two Howard.
What do you get it from?
We own three thirty-two Howard and it's been, you know, it's residential, it's been used as residential since we purchased it. It's a single-family home.
And your name?
Oh, Susan Collins, I'm sorry.
Uh, when you say three thirty-two?
Three thirty-two is the address, Howard.
Is that in the block or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And there's a single-family residential on one side of us, there's a duplex on the other side. And we have it in a contract, we actually have it in a contract since, um, November. And, um, our zoning in the, um, county is residential, but when the appraiser was going to be doing the appraisal, they found it obviously under your system, which was light industrial and, um, they won't, P and C won't loan on it because it'd be non-conforming use, so that's why we're here. So I can sell it, you know, commercial, you know, uh, for cash to somebody, but the only way to sell the residential is with your help, uh, at this point because of lending. Okay?
It's an, I'm sorry, it's an owner-occupied property?
It was, yes.
Okay.
Well, it was, yeah. Marson lived in it.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's kind of where we are. So, you know, anybody? So, you know, anybody there that wants to sell will be in the same position.
Yeah.
And I have to say, it's, you know, some people may take the view as a buyer going in, often get title insurance, so, you know, these things don't happen or you're made whole if it's not clear to you. But not only things such as how is that property zoned and do what you believe that you wish to do in that, it's not uncommon, probably not a week goes by that city hall will get a call from someone stating a question about a city ordinance or policy or activity or snow flowing, they'll provide their address that has a North Canton nailing address, we'll look it up, and they just happen to be in that kind of fringe and it could be Lake Township, Lane Township, Jackson. And they're adamant that I live in North Canton. And so actually you live in the township. Sometimes they'll say, you're certainly confused. I've lived here for a number of years, I know where I live, and sometimes I'll ask a question or you'll vote and they'll stay in there permanent. And I'll ask, do you recall whether you voted for a mayor or for a trustee? And then that's when the work goes on and like, holy cow, I'm in I'm in the township. How's that possible? Well, the nailing address is for the convenience of the post office. But at the county auditor, I'll let them know how to go online, we can look that up and see. So it's a part of not necessarily knowing how it's zoned. I hope you can, you know, understand that that can't happen. Perhaps they don't get title insurance and they're living there as residential, they believe it, it's not going through an agent and it's a, the owners selling it, they did work in the process. And there there isn't a realization that it's the utilized as residential, some buys it as residential now they come to find it's not.
I think in looking at this, you know, having grown up in North Canton, for as long as I can remember, they were all, they've always been residences, with the exception of maybe one or two properties. I, in looking at the book, obviously, I don't think that unless I'm missing something and maybe Mr. Diorio or Mr. Van Gundy can correct it, but I don't think the answer is putting the Xs back on, make it a mixed use overlay. It's obviously making them, and I'm guessing just by quickly looking, obviously not measuring this here, they need to be R fifty. And and I would think that, I I certainly feel for you guys, and certainly think we need to make this right, but the only thing is, I am concerned is that there are one or two businesses over there. So do we make the the recommendation that it all becomes residential? Because I I certainly want to get these, their problem corrected as quickly as possible, especially if they're under contract. Do we make a recommendation to make it all residential or do we have to come back yet again after we have done our due diligence and know that, hey, two of these are businesses or three of these are businesses? Because I don't want to foul them up as well. So I guess what are the thoughts and how can we get these people helped as quickly as possible? And follow the letter of the law, I should say.
If we looked at the mixed use overlay, it allows residential office, professional services, it would be tell. So would this not fall under mixed use?
So initially, the thought was to expand the mixed use overlay to the remainder of the parcels. However, in looking at that further, the residential use is now permitted on the ground floor with that it's above the ground floor.
Or it could be multi-family.
Right, or it could be multi-family. So in looking at it further, I think what you suggested would be, you know, viable option, rezonate to a residential primaries zone with the mixed use overlay. The one thing to consider with that though is the R fifty, these parcels wouldn't qualify in size for R fifty, so it would have the R two F, R two F has a six thousand square foot of them in most of these. Actually, I think all of these will qualify for the R two F zoning in regards to the configuration. But expanding, so it really would be a combination of both, expanding the mixed use overlay to the parcels and rezoning the underlying zone. So we could utilize the residential use but also allow the commercial businesses. It doesn't appear it would require a conditional use permit for the businesses, but it would give you an avenue, you know, a festival floor if you want.
So we don't foul up the businesses that are already there? Would they be grandfathered into the basis or, you know, the council should say, or would they then have to come back for a conditional use permit afterwards?
So they would be a non-conforming use in there. So at this point, they wouldn't have to do anything with those businesses as as I understand agreed the ordinance. However, if they wanted to do anything with the business, change it, they would have to come back for a conditional use permit or not come back before.
And I think that covered, you said, that would be for making these, when you said R two F with a mixed use overlay over top, is that what you said?
Exactly.
Yeah, sounds like that's the answer really. So you want the planning commission to make the recommendation to the city council? I see Chuck's hands raised, so Chuck, come on forward.
Tucker's one three oh seven February Streets, Hales, North Canton, Ohio. Well, to kind of follow up first on what Mr. Plaster was talking about here going on, you're trying to fix their problems so they can pass on their property. Now you're going to require the existing businesses that are there, you're going to complicate their future passing of their property, it sounds like, by requiring a continual, a conditional use? I don't know. It sounds like there's a real mess here that's been going on for a long time. I'm just going to stop there on that. I have some handouts here for three members that are here. I don't know, I'll be getting perfect attendance of these meetings. I think it should be made really clear what you're dealing with over the Hoover District. Some of these.
Chuck, we're not talking about this. I mean, we're all, we're talking about this issue on AM or we're not talking about, you know, we appreciate you.
But this area encompasses the contaminated property that exists over there.
We're not talking about anything about contaminated property or anything.
Well, that's the problem. Nobody's been talking about it ever since it came on on our radar. It's a highly contaminated piece of property. I just want to pass those documents out to you. You guys should educate yourselves.
We appreciate it.
There are land use restrictions over there.
Thank you.
You should read all about that.
Thank you.
And lastly.
It's pertaining to this.
It pertains to this board, this commission. Why do we have members that repeatedly are, do not show up? And you can nearly appoint them to remain on the commission? We know your chairman isn't out of the state for six months out of the year.
That's good, thank you. I'm here.
Right. And I'm glad to see you're here. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, so writing the motion?
I do have one quick question and maybe it's it's partly in line with what he said. Do we know the nature of these businesses? I know, I believe, let me rephrase it, I believe I know at least one of these businesses would be what I would consider to be an office. They're not manufacturing anything and and again, unless I'm correct, looking under the mixed use overlay, offices would be allowed or professional services would be allowed in there. So by making these residential with a mixed use overlay, I I don't believe, again, unless I'm misunderstanding the nature of the business that's going on over there, I don't believe that we would be impeding their sale such as these individuals are impeding with their sale today. Is that correct or am I missing? I mean, Mr. Diorio, I think you said that you were out there at the property, aren't these, these are what I consider to be offices, right?
Yeah, I think I know which one you're referring to and you're right. With the mixed use overlay, I think that's a great solution, you guys can help with if you put that on over top of the residential, it doesn't affect what's there. Right now, it's just, should the base be light industrial or should it be residential? It doesn't really matter with the mixed use overlay on top of it. So I think to your point, you're spot on.
Do we look for motion? Okay. Do we have to list out these individual lots that we are affecting or can we simply for the sake of our discussion base tonight say these thirteen, I think it was thirteen lots?
It was thirteen.
So I guess I would make a motion that we send the council the changing of the zoning for these thirteen lots to R two F with a mixed use overlay on top.
Between Howard Street.
Between Howard and Whitworth.
And Taff.
And Taff, it was going to be Taff, yeah.
If I might completely formulate that motion, it might include the property that is a form of Taff and Whitworth that is not, I mean, it's kind of hard to see.
I I missed that one as well, so.
It would actually be fourteen, so that's not that.
Okay. So I will rescind the motion that I just gave and I will restate the motion that we would, I move we make these fourteen lots as identified between Howard and Whitworth on Taff as well as the single lot that is on the north side of Taff, or excuse me, the north side of Howard, that we make these properties R two F with mixed use overlay and send this on to council for their approval.
Did you go north of Howard for that, grab that one over there?
Yes, sir.
My bad, it'd be fifteen.
The fifteen, okay.
You can simply say it's fifteen.
We would change that to those fifteen lots.
Is there a second?
What question? A lot, I know we're not talking about this specifically, but the lots on, that are west of Orchard and north of Howard, are those qualified as well? Are those an issue as well?
Those.
Fire department, right?
All right, those breaking down. So the two that are under the O in Orchard on that street?
Yes.
The one to the south is a vacant lot. So the one to the north is a duplex. The two that are behind the green fire, where the fire station is in that Charlotte block, those two are empty parcels as part of it.
All right, so I have a second motion. Roll call please.
Mr. Mollis?
Yes.
Mr. Plaster?
Yes.
Mr. Sierra?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to hear a motion for adjournment?
Sub moved.
Second.
Okay, meaning adjournment, thank you.